All right, it's 6:00 PM. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we'll go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance.
We're just gonna kick off the meeting tonight with a moment of silence for the passing of Mayor Ingean, who was such an incredible example of public service and dedication to the community that we all love. And this would not be the same community without him, so a moment of silence. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. Now we'll move on to item number three, review, revise, and approve the agenda. Does anybody want to move or remove an agenda item? Okay, so just would anybody motion to approve the agenda tonight? Moved by Trustee Decker, second by Trustee Hobbins. Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor approving tonight's agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. We'll move on to item number four, public comment. I don't see no one, so we'll move on to number five, reports and announcements from the superintendent.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome back. Just two quick things, not much. I would like you to know that there's an awful lot of professional development going on in this building this week and next week. That calendar is really packed. Tomorrow morning, all the new teachers that we've hired, fifty-five, sixty people, will be here in the morning. We'll be saying good morning and welcoming them at about eight o'clock tomorrow morning. And the Education Foundation is there at seven to say hi. And I think they're out touring the school where they're gonna be in the afternoon. And so we've got, we've really got a full house of variety of things. There was training in here this morning and science training. And so it doesn't appear that we're busy, but we're busy. So lots of things going on in this building. And then I sent you an email this morning. I don't know if you opened up your mcps.org email, but just tried to update you on a few things. If you haven't had a chance to see that, maybe you can read through that. And if you've got any questions, just give me a call. There's a few more things I could have added to that, but I thought that's probably enough for now. So we'll just try to keep you informed as we move forward. It's gonna be really busy next two or three weeks. And it's gonna continue to amp up. But I do have a number of things to share with you, so I'll probably be sending out a few updates. But if anything hits your mind, you want to get a question, please give me a call. I'd be glad to answer. So that's my report.
All right, on to item number six, new business, finance, operation, and maintenance, the adoption of 2022-23 elementary budgets. Over to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. And it's only been a week since we talked about these budgets. We have some updated information I'll go over, but I'll try not to be redundant, and I will, but I'll try not to be. So if you jump to page four on the elementary side, I'll start with the elementary. The page four is the adoption motion. So this motion reflects in one page the pieces of the budget that you're taking action on. So the budgeted funds are listed here, the nine budgeted funds. The amount of the budget and the amount of the levy are identified. So that's what action the board takes according to statute. The next two pages, pages five and six, I showed you these last week. Just the resolution indicating adoption of the budget that we share with the County Supes Office, and then my certification of the resolution indicating that the budget was adopted. The page seven represents some of the information that we didn't see last week. We have on page seven both last year's levy increase, change in mills, tax impact. And I did adjust that tax impact from a hundred thousand to a, from two hundred thousand, excuse me, to a hundred thousand dollars. It just makes more sense. It's not because I think tax global values are a hundred thousand, but because it's just easier to do the calculation for different values of homes. The background information, I pointed out a few things which I'll highlight here. If you look at the projections for the 2023 budgets, the numbers represent a $1.7 million increase among all those nine budgeted funds. So we go from sixty-two point four million to sixty-four point one million, a 2.8% increase, with the general fund increasing by eight hundred and nine thousand dollars, and the transportation fund increasing by five hundred thousand dollars. So that's your primary changes among those budgeted funds. You'll see the levy increase and the total levy increase at eight hundred and three thousand among all, again, all those budgeted funds. And I provided some info in the background section just about the prior year or two. So you can see last year the levy decreased to six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, and the prior year it decreased to two hundred and thirty-five thousand. So our budgets don't change with changes in tax values. We very much adopt budgets to the number, to the number that we are both compelled or limited to by state statute, or that will meet our obligations during the year. And so that's what this information represents. The tax estimate, it shows here on page seven, three seventy, it's three sixty-eight is a more accurate estimate of that tax impact. This is, it's just a lot of rounding going on there. But comparatively to the prior two years, the tax impact was down thirty-one dollars and thirty cents the prior year. And if you add to that the seventeen forty-six at the high school went down, that last year the reduction in tax impact was forty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. So this does represent an increase, but it does follow a couple of years of decreases. Let's see, the, that's sort of the points I wanted to make here. Probably the other item would be, you'll see on the transportation side, the budget went up five hundred thousand, but the levy was seven twenty-seven. And that's really a reflection of having no dollars to reappropriate. So our reserves there are very small. They're six percent. They can be twenty percent. So we maintained reserves at the same level, but had no funds to reappropriate. So the levy is gonna be higher to meet that budgeted need, and that's why that appears that way. Page eight, I'll jump to just a graph with elementary and high school, a very simple reflection of our change in mills over time. The top, the top portion of the graph is based upon the numbers on the left side. And these are the changes in our, in mills for the budgeted funds other than the debt service fund. So you can see those mills, going back to 2007, we're at a hundred and forty, just over a hundred and forty mills, some moderate growth, and then a reduction below one forty in 2022. And then we've gone up this year, but we still haven't reached where we were at in 2007 in terms of the number of mills. The other line is the debt service mills. And you can see where we started, and we had paid off our debt in 2011 and had six years with no debt service. And then the big spike represented our bond issuance, both in 2016, 2017, there are two separate ones. And then the numbers on the right are the debt service mills, so you can see how they change. So a little confusing because the debt service, they're using different mills. The left side for the budgeted funds other than the debt service, and the right side for the debt service. So you can see how they've changed. And on the debt service side, of course, we're paying that down. And I think it's just a good reflection of, over time, the consistency of those mills. And we can talk about the high school in a second. The page nine is a new document that you haven't seen, but it's something we'll put on the website. And it links a couple of the presentations that you've seen. It has a few more graphs and pie charts relative to the general fund. It talks a little bit more about the general fund, school funding formula, and calculations of mills and taxes within the general fund. More for the benefit of folks that might be looking on the website. I think it's something that you're all familiar with, but it's there in any case for more of a narrative of school funding. Page, page ten, I'm not going to go into any detail on this document. It's our projections for the general fund. We talked a bit about it last time. And two big takeaways are the increases are primarily salary and benefit related, and we're still relying upon ESSER funds to balance, primarily in the elementary, but a little bit in the high school as well. And finally, page eleven, we also looked at this document last week, and it represents the top half, does the elementary revenue sources. And below that box there, you'll see some summarized information. You'll see the mills levied have changed by a point one zero or a tenth of a percent. And then you'll see the A and B summary from one year to the next. And as I pointed out last week, the A and B here is a three-year A and B averaging. And that allows us to minimize the actual A and B decreases by averaging it over a three-year period of time, which we've relied upon in the elementary side and in the high school last year, not this year. So those are the items I wanted to talk about. I have, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, any questions for Mr. McHugh? Trustee Walker Andrews?
I just was curious about the A and B, whether it's the same for every student, no matter what their level is, or is it different for elementary and high school?
Yeah, good question. It is different for elementary and high school. So the, and it's actually different for seventh and eighth grade. So K six, A and B is calculated at a certain dollar amount. And it's around six thousand dollars. And let me see if I can give you some real specific numbers. And the high school is closer to eight, and that includes seventh and eighth grade. So when you do the A and B numbers, I'm sorry, I don't think I have the specific dollar amounts. But I can get those to you. It's, I'll probably dig and find.
I just wondered if they're.
They are. They are different, yes.
Trustee Decker?
Just a quick question. Can you remind me what the tuition fund is?
Yeah, so the tuition fund is a budgeted fund that we really didn't use for a number of years. And it only came into play a few years ago when the state law allowed school districts to permissively levy excess special education costs. So what, it became another funding opportunity for schools to meet really unanticipated needs. So what, how it's calculated is we look at the revenue received in the general fund per student. And it's calculated based upon these numbers that Trustee Walker Andrews is talking about. And then the cost for a student that's in excess of those numbers, then you can levy and increase costs. And so it's a, it's a, it's sort of a two-step process. The first is you look at the, sort of the, the revenue per student that flows through the general fund. And then the more complicated piece is looking at students, special ed students, that have costs in excess of those amounts. And so that's calculated, we have a number of students that require the support of two and three staff members. And so those students are ones that we can, we can permissively levy this excess cost. And it's very much a calculated number, so we lean heavily on the special education department. And we look from one year to the next where that amount might land. And so it's not like a specific number per A and B like we see with other components. It's very much a calculated number. We estimate it in March, and that's when we present to the board sort of what we likely will permissively levy. And then this is, it's still an estimate, but this is where we're at. So we'll finish the year with a known number. And with that known number, we reappropriate and we levy. And so we'll figure out if we have funds that we still have available, and then we calculate the levy after that.
Thanks. That's super interesting and helpful. And my other question is about the transportation fund. That strikes me as one of the funds on here that is very heavily on the local levy in comparison to the total amount, unlike, say, the general fund where we get a significant amount of state funding for that. And I was wondering if you would maybe just talk a little bit about what that, how that funding is calculated, why the state component of it is so low when I believe there's a statutory requirement to transport students, like what's going on there?
Yeah, so it's a good point and question. The, there is a state and county reimbursement, and so that state and county reimbursement is calculated. It is calculated based upon ridership miles, I wanna say. But at the end of the day, it's very small. So on the elementary side, we're factoring in two hundred and twenty-five thousand state reimbursement, two hundred and twenty-five local reimbursement. So as, I should say county. So what you're pointing out is very accurate. What that permissive levy is the primary source of funding for the transportation fund. And you're also correct that the transportation is compulsory. It's obligated, you know, we're obligated to transport students. And so this is, yeah, this is a significant local permissive levy. The, I know you know this, but the primary expenditure within this fund is our contracted services. We also pay a portion of staff costs recognizing that impact. And to the extent there's safety involved, we have crossing guards that are also calculated in the cost. But primarily, and not surprisingly, it's our contracted services.
Trustee Whit?
Just wanna make sure I'm understanding. When we talk about base budget and max budget, so those don't include things like transportation, and that's just general operating?
That's correct. That's right. So your general operating within the general fund will fall into the primary category of salaries and benefits. And then you'll have some discretionary allocations to school buildings to cover various expenditures for subs, training, travel, and then, and curriculum materials, that type of thing. And then we have fixed insurance-type costs and contracted services-type costs. But you're at eighty-five to ninety percent salaries and benefits in the general fund.
Okay, so then what other things, so we have permissive levies for transportation. Can you talk a little bit about the technology one? Because I think there are other ones on here I understand, especially now that we've talked tuition.
Yeah, so the, so the technology levy is a, was a voted levy. And so that levy was voted at a time when the statute provided permanent ongoing funding as that levy. So we have a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar levy and an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar levy. And those levies are permanent within the tech fund, provided we continue to use the funds to replace equipment. So it's like a depreciation levy. So it's, it recognizes the obsolescence of technology equipment along with the cost of technology equipment. And that tech fund is not just used for equipment, but the primary expenditure is equipment. But it also, we also pay for software, a variety of software, which is the other major expenditure.
Trustee Witcher?
Hi there. Hey, Pat, can you remind me when ESSER funding is no longer gonna become available?
Yeah, so September of 2024 is when we'll be compelled to obligate the funds and then expend them out by the end of the year. There's been talk about extending that time. There's been talk about providing additional time for construction projects, given the difficulty of materials and contractors. But that's what we've, are targeting, is September 2024.
Trustee Walker Andrews?
I had a question again about the technology levy. So when was that voted on, do you think?
I think, I think it was, it was after 2010.
Okay, and I just, I guess what I'm asking is, so it was specifically for our schools? It wasn't at the state level or anything?
Exactly. So it's, and it, it was right, it was really pretty excellent timing because just after we passed that voted levy, which, there was a calculation as to the amount you could ask for. And that calculation was linked to actual equipment you had possession of. And so we calculated it, we ran it, and then that legislative session, they changed the statute to provide term limits. So you, it was limited for a period of time. And that's how the building reserve is structured too. And we have no voted building reserves right now. But if we ran a building reserve, which we're looking at for the, for the, for maintenance costs and looking at running in the spring, it would be a set amount for a set amount of time. And the last levy we had was five hundred thousand per year for five years, I wanna say, in the elementary district.
Okay, I just knew that several districts tried this last time and weren't successful, and that's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, very good point.
Trustee Mercer?
So just clarify questions, question. So on the technology, like on the high school one, it says 1.6 million budget. So the difference between that and the levy is that's what we have in hand right now. That's the carryover. Okay.
Correct.
And so then on the building reserve, you just said we didn't have, so we have some levy though, three hundred thousand? And then my follow-up kind of question is, so this is what we have right now, and that's what we're approving. If in the spring we were to vote a permissive one, that would be for the next year, and then it would show up here next year.
That's correct. That's correct. And on the building reserve, I'm glad you brought that up. So we don't have a voted levy, but we have a permissive levy. And so this was that major maintenance statute. So, boy, this is probably two sessions ago. The legislature put in place the major maintenance funding for schools to hit priority major maintenance projects. And the funding was calculated at fifteen thousand dollars fixed plus a hundred dollars per A and B. And it went up to a hundred, a hundred and ten dollars per A and B this upcoming year. Starting two years ago, and including this year, part of the funding is state funding based upon our permissive levy relative to the state's permissive levy. So we, I probably, among these documents, could find that one. But we're, we're, we estimated a permissive levy in the spring and have stayed pretty, pretty close to those numbers. And we're counting on a fair amount of state reimbursement in terms of helping fund that levy. So in the high school, we're estimating that, the, on the elementary side, the max permissive levy under that calculation is six thirty-three. And we're funding three sixty-six locally, which means we're getting a healthy dose from the state. And the high school, it's not quite the same. We're at four twenty-four. And then we're locally levying two ninety-six. But in both cases, we're looking at state funds to offset the, or to supplement those, that permissive levy. And in the, in March, we identified projects. The primary project or only project in the high school is that HVAC system at Hellgate. And then on the elementary side, I think there are fire sprinkler projects. I got it right here. Yeah, so it's, looks like a water line replacement at CS Porter. So that was the biggie on the elementary side. Yeah. And then the EFS window replacement. But I don't think we'll have any funds to support that with the water line obligation at CS Porter. And I wish I could be more detailed with what that project is, but I can't remember.
And so then all this is separate from the capital bond. Is the building thing totally gone now? Is that zero? And my other final question, the inter-local agreement isn't on here anywhere. You're not using it because you're using ESSER, so there'd be no reason to dip into it. Is that right? And then, does it have a balance?
Yeah, and I'll try and remember all your questions. Oh, that's fine. So the bond, and it's a good reminder is when you look at the budgeted funds, the debt service is the only budgeted fund that you see there. And that's where we serve the annual obligation for the debt service. The building fund, which isn't a budgeted fund, is where the proceeds of the bond are deposited. And we've about exhausted both bonds, elementary and high school. We are sitting on our claim to the FCC for reimbursement of some of our infrastructure install that we spent at bond funds for. So that's part of the E, the E rate program. And we're arguing that some of the, about sixty percent of that expenditure should have been reimbursed under that program. So we're kind of sitting, not closing that pending receipt, hopefully, of some reimbursement. The building reserve is, is separate from the bond. So that, the bond is very specific to the ballot language and the Twenty First Century facility projects that we identified. The building reserve is, is limited in scope to maintenance. So we've, even though the bond covered maintenance projects as well, the building reserve is ongoing maintenance obligations. The multi-district funds, like the ESSER funds, they exist in Fund 15, or they sit in Fund 15. And so what you don't, what you don't adopt as a budget that also represents an operational expenditure area is Fund 15. And Fund 15 includes primarily our title programs, so Title I through Title VII, and our grant funds. So any grant proceeds that we receive that you guys might talk about, and we. So, so any grant proceeds that we receive that you guys might talk about, and we are successful on those proceeds, will go into, uh, Fund Fifteen, um, along with the federal programs. Uh, that's also where the multi-district, well, actually, the multi-district exists in Fund Two Eighty-two, which is a near-local fund, like Fund Fifteen, it's a non-budgeted fund. And that balance is around three million dollars going up to this year. And we haven't expended, um, much from that, those resources. Other, uh, resources like that, that sit in Fund Fifteen are some of our Medicaid billing reimbursement, our indirect cost, uh, reimbursement, um, any of our rental proceeds, any sale proceeds, any insurance proceeds that we might have. So we, we call those soft money sources and, um, we haven't talked about them for a while, so we probably do a little recap at a future meeting for sure with the budget committee discussion. But there are some, these are sort of, uh, uh, um, account dollars, uh, funds that we sort of treat like savings accounts, where we can maintain them without having to expend them one year to the next. Does that, did I get them all?
Trustee Decker?
Thanks. I, uh, I always kind of dread this meeting, and then I'm always kind of like, this is like being in school. Like, Pat, you're so great at explaining these things.
We both dread this meeting.
So I am hoping that you can tell me if I have this right, that the way that the mill work, the mills work, is that the entire taxable value in the entire region, whether it's the elementary or the high school, is kind of piled all together. And so if there's been, say, a lot of new building or new development in one of those regions, that's actually split among like more taxpayers at that point in a way. It's not as much of a one-to-one, like my house value. Like, if I put a deck on my house, I now have to pay more taxes. Cause people get very like tied into what's going on with their bill. But this is a shared way of doing, like the way the mills work. It sort of puts another layer in between the individual taxpayer and the like ultimate bill. Am I sort of catching that right?
I think so, and I, I think, uh, um, that document I threw in there on page nine, I think is, has a little blurb about taxes, but, but the, um, the increase in tax values, um, overall, doesn't necessarily mean an increase in your tax value. And, and that's probably more the reason for the increase in tax values this year, because it wasn't an assessment year. So this increase was, was, uh, smaller. So, um, to the extent you add any new value to that tax value, that's going to be relief to somebody who paid taxes the prior year. Because to, to the extent it's all new value added to the tax valuation, um, it, it's sort of a new member to help share the cost. And that's, uh, the example I always use are, relates to the, the tax increment financing districts. When they sunset, um, that, uh, the value at the point of creation of the TIF is part of the tax valuation that gets assessed for city and school taxes. And then the increase in value goes into the TIF. So when it sunsets, then the full value goes into the calculation of tax valuation, which we would see here and look at as a huge increase in a mill value. And the, and the impact would be to lower our mills and ultimately lower taxes. So it, it, I, I think what you're saying, and I agree with, is that the, um, increase in tax value may relate to reasons other than an overall increase in everybody's taxes and can relate to increases by virtue of additional property added to the next. And, and to that extent, then the, uh, the tax impact is reduced. And that's what these numbers represent, because it's, it's both a factor of our increase in levies and an increase in the tax value per mill. And as that goes up, you know, it, all things being equal, your taxes, um, we represent this here as a, it, as a tax impact, um, even a reduction in taxes. But, but to the extent it's based upon an increase in tax value, then, then it, it's, it's a little bit misleading. And all we can do is base it upon what, what is, what happens one year to the next. And, uh, and so it, um, it will have a reduction in, in taxes, but maybe not all, all over the place. Sorry. It's a, it's, it's a confusing piece. And the only way really to, to compare it one year to the next is to look at your personal tax statement and to sort of analyze how the impact happens. And, um, which is, I mean, is a good exercise, that, you know, just, just trying to compare. Uh, as I know really closely, what we do is so I can see how it translates, you know, to, to family member taxes, that type of thing.
Any more questions? Trustee Walker Andrews?
I think you may have addressed this with that very long question that came up before. Is, um, the lead in the water, um, thing that we've been doing, is that in this sort of maintenance, category that, of the building reserve, or what?
Yeah, it's, it's not in the, uh, um, the general fund, and it's really not in that maintenance fund either. It could be. So, so you have, within that building reserve, both in the elementary and the high school, we have carryover building reserve. So those are funds that we've, uh, carried forward from previously past voted levies, and we haven't expended them yet. And the only time we expend them is when we come to the board and say, hey, can we use some carryover funds? And we did recently with the HVAC at Hellgate, because the permissive levy was going to be short. So we went, came back to the board and said, can we use carryover to make that work? We have healthy amounts of carryover in the elementary and the high school. It's, it's, I'm sorry, I don't have the, the number, but, um, of the budgeted amount there, it's, you know, it's a, it's a pretty sizable amount. And, uh, it is a potential place to look to cover facility maintenance obligations, including like that, that lead obligation. And I know from, uh, talking with OPIs, that OPI is in support of using ESSER funds for those, any type of lead remediation projects as well.
Any other questions? Seeing none, looking for an elementary trustee motion for, in, um, recommending we approve adoption of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three elementary budgeted funds and the amounts to be raised by tax levies as presented on the attached motion in resolution twenty twenty-three dash two. Moved by trustee Witt? Second by trustee Hobbins? Any final board comments? I just want to thank Pat and his team for setting us, providing us, uh, information. I know you really tried to answer our questions, so I just want to thank you for that. Any public comments? Seeing none, all elementary trustees in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Moving on to topic two, adoption of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three high school budgets. Back to you, Mr. McHugh.
Uh, thank you. So I'd probably just start on page eight, which is the, the graph that we talked about with the elementary and, and, um, I, uh, it, it's interesting in the high school, just knowing, um, sort of where that budget has gone over time and, and, um, in comparison to the elementary. And it's, uh, um, it, it, in the general fund, and a good way to look at it is, if we look at a fifteen-year time period, ten of those years, the, uh, high school budget, um, went down by four hundred students, then with, within the next five years, it went down by forty-four students. And then it's, 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 uh, going back up, and it's, it's becoming real healthy from an A and B standpoint. And so it's, it's kind of this long progression of time. The, the elementary is, is like a hot and cold faucet. It's, um, it, it kind of had a period of, uh, of a, a significant decline and, um, and then a consistent growth over that same fifteen-year period, I want to say. It's, it's over a thousand A and B. And it's only when looking at the last couple of years. So this, this is an ESSER blip, um, and I'm just anxious to see what it looks like, uh, this fall and, 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 uh, through the demographic work, what it'll look like going down the road. But thi- this, this kind of graph is, is a little bit reflective of, of just how the high school, um, is pretty slow and steady. And, um, and you can see even compared to two thousand and seven, where we're between seventy and eighty mills for the budgeted funds other than debt service. And, and we're, uh, we're adopting larger budgets and, and at, at lower mills. And a big piece of that is tax valuation within the county, of course. But it, it is still pretty steady over time. And, uh, and then if you look at the, uh, the debt service, um, we, when we, um, issued bonds in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, we did have, uh, small amounts of debt at play. But we've, I mean, just, it's pretty amazing how much, uh, that debt service, um, has declined over that period of time in terms of the number of mills. So we're, we're steadily paying off those, those bonds, or paying down those bonds. The, uh, the, the last page, or, I'm sorry, the page twelve is the high school budget adoption motion. And like the elementary, it reflects the, the budget and the amount to be raised by levies. The, uh, and then those numbers are reflected on page fifteen, which has a little bit more of the detail. And, uh, um, the, uh, the budgets are increasing in the, in the high school, um, by more. So two point three million increase over last year. The general fund is two point two million, um, that represents the largest increase. The transportation fund was, uh, two hundred and sixty thousand, but it's, uh, it's primarily the general fund increase from last year to this year. And a lot of that, or that primarily relates to that enrollment bump that we were talking about. So, um, it's really been a long time coming on the high school. We've, we've been eyeing it, and it, it's sort of materializing at this point. So, um, the levy, um, increase is, is over a million dollars. And again, that's primarily cha- uh, general and transportation fund. Compared to last year, there's a decrease in levy of three hundred and four thousand, and then the year before, a decrease in levy of nine hundred and fifty thousand. So we're, we're on the heels of two years of declining levies, uh, much like, like the elementary. And, and, um, and just seeing somewhat the, the, the health of the high school improving from a number standpoint. And then that translates to these, these dollars, so, um, I think that's all I had to add to, for the high school.
All right, we'll open the floor for questions. Any questions? Trustee Walker Andrews?
Only because we haven't asked, what is flex?
I have no idea, so we haven't used that fund since I've been here. The only reason there's funds there, uh, is there's an opportunity grant that we received, also a recent state statute grant. It's used to, to minimize the impact on parents for, um, uh, for, uh, extra activities. And that would include, um, like material fees, transportation, that type of thing. So, so it was used, um, pretty extensively for, um, uh, rob- robotics competition travel. So it, it, it's intended to, um, I think primarily in CTE programs, to minimize the out-of-pocket obligations of parents from a participation standpoint. And, um, that's the only thing that's been active and flexed that I can even think of for the last twenty years.
Any other questions?
Seeing none, I will take a trustee motion for the recommendation to adoption of all twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three high school budgeted funds and amounts to be raised by tax levies as presented on the attached motion in resolution twenty twenty-three dash two. Moved by trustee Walker Andrews? Second by trustee Wallach? Any final board comments? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of this adoption, please indicate by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. All right, now we'll move on to B, personnel negotiations and policies. Topic is to ratify two-year agreement with trades and crafts. Over to you, Mr. Rock.
Thank you. The trades and crafts, which is our electricians, plumbers, and painters, represents our very last employee group with, we need to finish negotiations with this year. So we finished that up about a week and a half ago, and it was agreed that for this school year, and it would be retroactive to July first, uh, there would be a one point seven five percent increase. And for the following year, one point five percent. And that aligns with the amounts that we had negotiated with our other employee groups. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, we'll open the floor for questions. Any questions by any trustees? Trustee Witt?
Just out of curiosity, how many employees are in this group?
I think about ten.
Any more questions? Seeing none, all right, I'll ask for a motion for approval of the ratifying the two-year agreement with trades and crafts with appreciation to the district and to the trades and crafts team. Moved by trustee Decker? Second by trustee Hobbins? Any final board comments? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of ratifying the two-year agreement, please indicate by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. And that concludes our agenda. And we have one quick comment.
Tracy, would you remind us of the next board meeting? It is September thirteenth, am I correct? So then it'd be the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh, just checking your calendars. Six PM and on both of those nights, thirteen and twenty-seven in September, and that's it.
All right, six forty-eight, meeting adjourned.